Do you want to come through now?
I want to.
Okay.
What time do you what say?
Maybe we can take a nice picture.
It's by fifty eight.
Eight.
All right.
This is pretty dumb as a season.
Hey. So if I could have Councilmember Barber Coleman and Taylor come up to the table, we're gonna do our oaths. Jack, you're included in this one.
The what?
Yeah.
Oh.
Papa. Believe in that. They do. So it's gonna be. Right, then maybe I'll sign your off. Say your name, say state of the nation. So I state your name, do solemnly affirm.
I'm Mont Coleman, do solemnly affirm. We do individually or all together?
You just do it all together.
Okay.
I, Sharon Taylor, do solemnly affirm. Yeah.
I'm Jack Barber. I do solemnly affirm that I will support the vote of the United States. The United States and the laws as part of the city of Philadelphia. And at the table last, yeah, and I will. The duty of office. The office, yeah, some member.
I do so affirm. All right, congratulations. Missed out on any. Here.
I have to sign both.
It's the bottom.
Uh.
Just the bottom. This is a massive chip. I know, it's like the first be fine.
You're gonna date it?
Yeah. It's a bikini.
Mayor Campbell will not be with us tonight, so Councilmember Keithley is going to be our acting mayor for this. And then Councilmember Keithley, whenever you're ready.
All right, perfect. We are gonna call this meeting to or uh to order. It's a Seldovia City Council regular meeting. It's actually, actually, are we calling it a regular meeting or a special?
It's a special meeting.
Okay, I was like, it says regular on here, but special Monday, November third, twenty twenty fifth at six P M. Uh. Item B, pledge of allegiance. If Heidi or Liz, one of you would like to lead the council in the pledge.
Because I want to be nice, like. And to the people, which is stand one nation under God, and to the citizens with the regime of justice for all.
All right, moving on to item C, excused absences. We have none. Item D, agenda approval. I'll look for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll go ahead and make an emotion to approve tonight's agenda. Do I have a? Councilmember Keithley, if we could go back to do roll call real quick?
Oh, yes, roll call, sorry. All right, and roll call, let me open my screen. Sorry, my screen's a little small. Okay, all right, roll call. Keithley, here. Langvart, here. Coleman?
Yeah.
Taylor?
Here.
Peyton?
Here.
And Barber?
Here.
All right, everyone is in attendance. Thank you all. And with that, we will move down, back down to item D, agenda approval. And I will, I looked for a motion to approve tonight's agenda. We had a motion by Langvart, and we're looking for a second.
I second it.
All right, and that was a second by Coleman. Moving on to item E, consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are approved with a single motion, no discussion, and one vote. A council member may request to remove any item or items for discussion and a separate vote. Items removed from the consent agenda will be placed under new business. Item number one is the approval of minutes, minutes of the regular meeting, October thirteenth, twenty twenty five. Item two, ordinance introduction. A, ordinance twenty six dash zero six, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Seldovia, Alaska, adopting a recodification of Seldovia municipal code to include ordinances enacted during fiscal years twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six for titles two, ten, eleven, and eighteen. And this is being presented by the city clerk. We have a recommended public hearing on the tenth of this month.
Acting Mayor Keithley, if we could roll back to the agenda approval, we do need to do a vote on that. Would you like to do the roll call, or would you like to do it?
I can do that. All right, so on item D, agenda approval, we had Langvart and a second by Coleman. All those in favor? Keithley, aye? Langvart?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Peyton?
Aye.
And Barber?
Aye.
All right, we have a unanimous pass on that. And we will move back down. We were going through our consent agenda. And we got through item two A and item three resolutions, none. Do we have anything requested to be moved out of tonight's consent agenda? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approving tonight's consent agenda? Keithley, aye? Langvart?
Aye.
We do need a motion, if we could ask for a motion.
Oh, okay. And I'll take, we're looking for a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
I'll go ahead and second that.
Perfect, we have an approval by Harmony and a second by Langvart. All those in favor? Keithley, aye? Langvart?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Taylor? Taylor?
I made. Get the un you.
Did I, it's not coming through online.
Okay, I am.
Perfect. Peyton?
Aye.
And Barber?
Aye.
All right. Agenda is approved, all in favor. Moving on to item F, mayoral proclamations, none this evening. Item G, public presentation prior notice. Each presenter has up to ten minutes. I don't have anything on the agenda. Liz, do we have anybody signed up?
No, we have no presentations prior to it.
Okay, and then moving on to item H, public presentation for items not on the agenda. Public has three minutes each. Do we have anybody in the audience there?
No hands are raised.
All right, moving on to item I, committee and advisory reports. Each member has five minutes. Uh, we have none this evening unless there's any that I don't know of, Liz.
No, we have none.
Okay, moving on to item J, administrative reports. We have all of them this evening, so item is our finance quarterly report, and I will hand this over to Jan, and you can find that on page nine of your packet.
Uh, good evening, council members. Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so, oh, give me just a second. You moved through the agenda so rapidly that I was not quite ready with the report up. Can we just?
I'm two hours ahead, so I'm ready.
You are just very efficient tonight, and I will try and be the same. Um, so this is the report as of October twentieth, so it does not reflect any of the um, October billing or the payroll for the last part of October. Um, but I was, you will see through that, the report, the numbers showing the the two payrolls that happened in October, the one for the last part of September, the middle of October, and then the the billing. Sorry, I'm not phrasing that very well, but I'm trying to give you a forecast of what the revenues look like at the end of October. So, as you can see, our general fund, we are actually already at forty seven percent of the projected revenues. Uh, that is largely because a lot of the property taxes and so on come due in October, November, and so we've seen a lot of those revenues come in already. It's not. I would love to say it's that we're, you know, it's almost halfway at our revenue point, only a third of the way through the year, but that's not actually the case. We will see the the revenues decrease as as the year progresses, but that is still a good position to be in. Um, we've had, we've definitely been seeing an uptick in sales tax returns and so on. Um, and we are currently at thirty seven percent of the the projected revenues for sales tax. Um, and which is pretty good to see. Generally, November is probably our biggest month where we see a good return. And then also, there was some sales tax payments that came in after this report was done as well. Uh, personal property tax at forty eight percent, motor vehicle at thirty one. Um, and again, the September revenue for remote seller sales tax, because that runs late with all the processing and has to go through, that is not reflected in there yet either, and yet we're still at about thirty three percent. So generally, our revenues are looking quite good. Our expenditures are just about exactly where we expect them to be, averaging thirty four percent of expected projected revenues, or sorry, projected expenditures, and we're thirty three percent of the way through the fiscal year. And this is actually a little bit better than it looks, because that thirty four percent of the projected expenditures includes all of our insurance, which we paid out in lump sum at the beginning of the year. That's a pretty hefty amount. Uh, so even though this looks like we're right on track at a third of the way through, we are actually a little bit ahead. And I want to also look at the library number, because you see that that's at forty two percent of of expenditures, which looks worrisome. It really is not, because the main expenditure for the library, again, is the property tax or the property insurance, which has been paid, and so as the year progresses, we see those expenses go down. Uh, and so uh, even though that shows forty two percent, that's not a number that I'm worried about at all. Uh, net effect for our general fund is looking quite good, quite healthy at this point. Again, there is that is a little bit overweighted, because we're seeing the heavier sales tax returns in the fall that will probably balance out a little bit um, as we go into the the early winter, early winter and spring months where we see lower sales tax returns, but it's still a pretty good position. It's certainly an improvement over where we were just even a month ago. Um, our interest to date, just under six thousand dollars. Um, and again, that does not include any of the Charles Schwab changes in value, because we don't really consider that that interest. Um, in terms of our special revenue funds, water is in pretty good shape. We're seeing a net balance there, same thing with sewer. Uh, those are both running in the black. Uh, the dock is actually running in the black, which is nice to see, even though it's a small amount. Uh, however, we will see that again, it's probably swing back the other way starting in early winter as the the ferry stops running, because as we know, the ferry is the main source of revenue for the dock, and so when it is is gone for three to four months, which is kind of the hole we're anticipating this year, that that does hurt us a bit. Uh, because, of course, we're not seeing some of the expenses with the dock related to ferry crew and so on, but we're also not seeing uh, the revenues and some of our expenses, you know, power use and that, and that don't really change that much. Even though the ferry is not coming. Harbor is running in the deficit, but again, that is normal this time of year. The main source of revenue for the harbor is the annual mortgages that don't come through to February, so uh, we do expect, we expect it to see it in a deficit at this time of year, but as you can see, if you look for the net effect, it it's really not too bad for for what we anticipate. And if we look at the nine thirty balance as opposed to the the overall net effect, you see that it's 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 much, it's closer to being in balance, and that's where we're balancing, or we're looking at complete months of revenues and expenses as opposed to the the overall net effect of October twentieth shows a lot of the expenses for October, but doesn't reflect the revenues. That's why I've got the nine thirty numbers in there. Um, same thing with the boat haul out. It's probably running a little behind where we normally see it, but it's not too bad. And again, it is in the black, so basically, all the special revenue funds are looking pretty good for this time of year. Um, and they are, just like the general fund, they are affected by paying the liability insurance in the lump sum at the beginning of the year, so we will see them start to get ahead as we get further away from that large payment and start realizing more revenues against it. Um, in terms of the audit, we have gotten lists of most of our sample work. I've started getting some of those returns. Um, and so we're starting to get a little bit of feedback from the auditors. Um, and they're also working with Ami Taylor of Taylor Tax and Accounting. She was the one that worked with us last year, did an excellent job, and we're working with her again this year to just make sure everything is buttoned up, and we hope to have all the prep work done here in the next month or so and start the audit in earnest in January. And that is pretty much my comments for tonight, but I am open for questions.
All right, thank you, Jan. Does anybody have any questions for Jan on her quarterly finance report? All right, hearing none. Thank you, Jan. It was a great report, appreciate that. And we will move on to our second report, which is the Harbor Master Quarterly Report. You can find that on page thirteen, and I will pass this over to Leila.
Good evening, everybody. And congratulations to the new council members, Jack and Mont and Jackie, welcome aboard. Um, this last month has just been kind of finalizing a lot of the stuff that was pushed till fall after a busy summer. Um, I just listened to Jan's report. She was talking about the dog. Just wanted to let you guys know that the Earl Cunningham, the new Coast Guard Cutter is coming in for a couple days. We haven't set the dates yet, but that's pretty exciting. Um, I just want to say thank you for everybody who made donations for the scholarship fund for the AHPA Association. Um, this year, we raised twelve thousand, three hundred and thirty five in just that one night. And all that money goes to Alaskans that are pursuing maritime careers. Um, upcoming projects, I have uh, kind of gave you guys a little bit of a tease there for a bit about a fisherman's memorial, still talking to some of the people around town, getting ideas, um, lots of ideas. So that's upcoming and working on upgrading our Almar radios. Um, that's about all I got. Any questions?
Doesn't sound like it. Awesome. Thank you, Leila.
Thank you.
There, and as always, we'll be excited to get through the winter and feedback and be active down there in the harbor a bit more come spring. All right.
Well, don't be shy, and everybody have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to our third report of the evening. It's gonna be our public works and maintenance quarterly report. You guys can find that on page fifteen, and I will hand it over to Amanda for that.
Hello, how are we doing this evening? Anybody, can you hear me?
Fabulous, yes.
Okay, just checking. I hadn't said anything yet, so making sure I know how to use this thing. Um, we're just getting ready for winter and plugging along, got the jacklawn dock torn apart and put on the beach, and so that was kind of a big big project, good thing to get done, and um, yeah, moved the the Arts Council stage, and I don't know, we've been doing all kinds of stuff. Lots of water shut offs this time of year. Everybody's leaving. We're gonna get the hydrants. The ones that are non-drainers, get those winterized and springtime, we're gonna get, we're gonna have Todd Cook come help us do a a system flush route. So that's kind of, that'll be fun. We'll be able to have a procedure for the whole system flush now, so. Um, I got nothing else. If anybody has any questions? That is, I'm happy to answer them.
That is Councilmember Taylor, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, have the hydrants been flushed, all the hydrants in town been flushed for the winter? It was unclear on the report from Water Works that he was coming in the spring to finish them.
Um, he's gonna, he's, we have done some flushing of hydrants, but um, the the only winterizing we do is there's five um, hydrants that don't drain water back. So we have to, we have to put antifreeze in those.
Okay.
That's, those are the only ones that get winterized.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
All right, any other questions for Amanda? All right, awesome. Thank you for the report and all the hard work out there. Hopefully, uh, looks like, I know I'm not there right now, but when I
Thursday is saying seven inches.
Oh, man. Okay, thank you for letting me know what it says, because that way I can
Bar.
My house sitter.
We'll just, we'll see what happens, yeah.
Awesome.
Woo hoo. Okay, you guys have a good night.
Thank you, too.
All right, bye bye.
All right, moving on, we've got our fourth and final report, and that this is gonna be for the Village Public Safety Officer, our VPSO. And this is just a written report this evening, so we can all go to page seventeen and take a look at that. I'll give you guys a minute or so. Great. It looks like a lot of great traction through their program moving forward. Uh, excited to see they'll be able to proctor the DMV written test over here. That'll help some of our younger folks out to not have to make that trek across the bay. Facebook page, keep people in the know, um, getting fire training back up and running. If anybody has any questions, I know sometimes Heidi or Liz can help on that, since they do check in with the VPSOs and work along with them. So does anybody have any questions on anything in this report? All right. Perfect, let me just scroll back up here, then that will get us through all of item J, our administrative reports, and we will be moving on to public K. Or item K, public hearings. Uh, item one, ordinance twenty six dash zero four, a non-code order of the city of Seldovia. City, city council of the city of Seldovia, Alaska, amending the FY twenty six budget to recognize small liability accounts carried forward, and I will pass this over to Heidi, the city manager.
Thank you, manager. Yes.
I have a question. On the water consumption and where it gives max and minimums, and then you have sixty seven percent efficiency. How do I look at that? Is, are we losing the thirty three percent? Due to leaks or something, or what, how does, what's that representing?
Through the chair, I will have to ask and get back to you on that. I don't have an answer.
The what?
I'll have to ask and get back to you on that. I don't have an answer at this time.
You understand my question, though?
I hear what you're saying. I don't believe we're losing that water, because we at least we're not losing it in the distribution system, because our mainly, our daily consumption is between thirty two and forty two thousand gallons a day. Um, but I'm not sure exactly what it refers to, so let me double check and get back to you.
Trying to figure out the, or is it sixty seven percent of the outflow of what our hundred percent of our capability is?
I wouldn't think it'd be that either, because we have a five hundred thousand gallon tank, and we can pump out a lot of water. Um, it could be that we're on using sixty seven percent of the water treatment plant. I know one of our filters was off for a while. I'm not sure, though. I will double check and get back to you.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Heidi, for checking on that, and then I will pass that back on to you for item K, one, ordinance twenty six dash zero four, and council, you can find this on page eighteen of your packet. You might, as you said, it's on page eighteen. Um, this came about, I don't know if you remember, some of you, some of you are new. Um, in the last audit, our auditors brought this forward again in the in the letter to the governing board that there were a few small liability accounts um, that continued to remain on the books but weren't being accounted for um, through administration and city council. And some of these go back, I mean, they're well before my time at the city, so over eight and a half years. Um, they're they're all from before that, and you can see it was the Lollipop Park Fund, Share Project, Seafarers Fund, Boardwalk Fund, Beautification Fund, Police Fuzz Fund, and Hospital Guild Fund. Um, small amounts that just remained on the books to be closed out. Um, and we had stated in the FY twenty four audit that we would close this out in FY twenty five. Unfortunately, uh, that did not take place. We did do a deep dive and did a lot of research into what these funds were for and how to account for them, and now we're here in FY twenty six, but we are taking care of it. Um, a little bit late, and with that, in discussion with our finance officer and with Ami, with our our, with tailored consultants, double check, that's that's their full name, but um, with our auditing consulting firm. We talked about a game plan to account for these funds, uh, and that's what was produced here in ordinance twenty six oh four. So there's a little bit of background on each of the funds themselves, and then in the ordinance, uh, we are recommending the creation of a Parks, Recreation and Trails Fund, as well as a Harbor Boardwalk and Seafarers Memorial Fund. And I, we thought this was prudent, because instead of just taking those funds and absorbing them and expending them out, these are, there are projects in each of these categories that the councils talked about, that the public's talked about, uh, that potentially, you know, that are in the CIP or in the comprehensive plan that eventually, or in even short order, there could be movement on these projects, and so having the beginning of funds set aside for those projects um, can help accomplish that task. So you'll see the transfer from each of those funds on page nineteen, uh, and then the transfer to. So you'll see the transfer from each of those funds on page nineteen, uh, and then the transfer to. And to make it a little bit clearer on page twenty, this would be the updated page in our budget, in the FY twenty-six budget, uh, that shows the funds themselves separated out into categories, so there's the Saldovia Permanent Fund, Major Maintenance and Repair Fund, and then the Capital Improvement Funds, you'll see then those newly created, established Parks and Rec and Trails Fund, and that would already include the Lake Susan a- a access account, that's already been established by council, but now we're also including under that fund, the beautification account, Lollipop Park account, and RV Park account. So those are all parks, recreation and trails related, um, overall being seven thousand and seventy-six dollars and sixty-seven cents approximately. And then where they'll be in there, they will, these are all in AMLIF, everything um below the very first account under Saldovia Permanent Fund, so that one is the uh APCM, that's the principal that's in Charles Schwab for the Saldovia Permanent Fund. Everything else is in or will be in if this is passed um this evening, the AMLIF revenue, and you can see that total at the bottom of seven ten, uh, seven hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars and twenty-five cents, and we're adding in the green uh of, of, the green are the accounts that are changing, the pub, police and public safety was already there, so there's a small increase to that one. Uh about six thousand dollars. Um, everything else is new, so having the Harbor Boardwalk account, uh, Seafarers Memorial, you heard the Harbor Master, Leila Jean Peterson just talking about that, there's definitely some interest in the community of seeing a Seafarers Memorial, um, and she's interested in trying to do something with some of these funds uh to pursue that in the short future. Harbor Boardwalk, we continue to discuss, it is a CIP, CIA proba, uh, CIP project, and um we just recently submitted an application for the planning of that um infrastructure, so if we receive that, we'll be making headway on it and we'll continue to look for that. And then again, um, I mentioned the beautification, Lollipop and RV Park are things that we just continue to work through. Uh, above that, in police and public safety, we now have a Hospital Guild Memorial Board account, and that's if you see out here in the hallway. Um, we have these Hospital Guild Memorial Boards that were transferred over to the city when the Hospital Guild closed. And we continue to purchase boards, and we purchased um two in this last fiscal year. Diane keeps track of them and buys plaque for them, pla- packs for them and continues to update them um as memorial boards for the community. So putting a portion of the funds from the Hospital Guild to that, and then the rest to public safety. This should take care of those accounts, and then moving forward, we know that they're in, in these separate accounts and these separate funds, and will go towards dedicated projects for these activities as prescribed, and if you have any questions, please let me know.
Alright, thank you Heidi, and with that, I will turn this over to council for discussion if anyone has any questions or comments. Please go ahead.
I have a question. We earlier on talked about greater payments, whether to pay it off or keep the money, and where, where did we go with that?
Um, so through the chair, that currently is being, that, that's currently being done through an annual payment. We're actually going to make that payment this coming month, we normally do towards the end of the year, uh, fifty-one thousand and change. Uh, and then we will have, and it's not in front of me, I'm sorry, um but we can look back in the budget and see what the remaining amount will be. Uh, moving forward, I think we still have three years of payments due, um, so another hundred and fifty-something thousand dollars, and that account is, that it's sitting in the two percent, um, you can see down here is a hundred and sixty thousand, yes.
So in three years, it'll be paid off then, is that correct?
If we keep making annual payments, yes, otherwise if you guys decide to make a lump sum payment in the future, we can pay it off early, but that will have to be a, a separate discussion.
Alright, thank you Heidi, any other comments or questions on ordinance twenty-six dash zero four? Before we go to public?
Looks like uh Councilmember Peyton has her hand raised.
Oh, perfect, alright, Councilmember Peyton?
Hi, um, just for my own clarification, I believe when we discussed the um when we were discussing paying off the greater early or later, that we found that there really wasn't a benefit, it was just, you know, at, at the rate that we're currently paying it off, it's getting paid off quickly enough that um, we're not putting ourselves in the hole, but by not paying it off in a lump sum, we're not like perhaps putting ourself in a bind by um putting huge lumps towards something that doesn't need it, when we might need those emergency monies, right?
What?
Sorry, it's hard to, I'm trying to keep Florence from digging around and also articulating my question.
Through the chair, uh, thank you, Councilmember Peyton, excellent um summarization. So it was found when staff looked into paying the greater off early, uh, that would save about twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, council during that discussion directed staff to continue to make annual payments um with the discussion that having the revenue set aside for those payments um was beneficial in case something else came up in the short term that needed to be taken care of, instead of wiping that account out and then having to start over. Um, those funds are available, and if we need to pay it, we can, if we need to pay something else, we can. Um, but in the meantime, annually, we'll make our regular payment, and it will be done in the next um three or three to four years. But it's up to you guys, if you guys want to reopen that discussion, uh, just let us know, and we can make sure that that is on an upcoming agenda.
I, I think my question was, are we gonna make the payments or keep the money in the bank or, or pay it off, and that was only, so we'll continue making the payments.
That was the last direction of the council, and if you, so if you guys wanna uh update that, just let us know.
I have a question about the harbor dock beautification, can you elaborate on that, I'm not familiar with? Could go, the obser, is this observation dock? Not to change the subject.
Uh. Through the chair, are you talking about the Harbor Boardwalk account?
I'm talking about the beautification.
The beautification under Parks, Recs and Trails?
Yes.
Uh, that, not necessarily related to the harbor, it's just a beautification account that, towards any type of parks or community project that would beautify um city land and, and benefit that type of project. That's what it was raised for, those funds.
Okay. Okay, let's call the question, how come the?
We can't quite hear Jackie entirely online.
Okay. It was unclear, I mean, I, you know, that volunteers have done the work out there for years, I'm just wondering why it was never part of the beautification.
Uh, through the chair, so that was a question on the Otterbon Trail and why the city, that's not part of the city funds. Um, excellent question, so the Otterbon Trail exists outside of city limits, and it does not, the city doesn't have any jurisdiction, so and there's no easement or um lease or permit, or we don't have any, so Rocky Ridge Trail, for instance, is outside of city limits. Um, but we have permits through DNR and the University of Alaska to maintain that trail, so that is a city trail. The Otterbon Trail is located along a section line easement, uh technically through borough, you know, that'd be a borough section line easement, and at this time, the city doesn't have any standing with that trail. There has been talk about a potential project where the city would pursue and um and purchase the properties surrounding Trina Lake.
Mm-hmm.
And that was a discussion that was actually started with that property owner, and there is some interest in that. Uh, secondary, one of those benefits would be that it would a butt up to the Otterbon Trail, which would give us that um that access and capability to help maintain and take care of it, but at this point in time, the city doesn't have um any jurisdiction over that area.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilman Taylor, for your great questions, and Heidi for your insight, any other questions or comments before we move to public? Alright, hearing then, Liz, do we have anyone in the public in the room or online? Wanting to speak?
I'm not seeing anybody.
Alright, without any more comments, I'll be looking for action by the council on ordinance twenty-six dash zero four.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-six dash zero four.
I'll go ahead and second that, Ashley.
Alright, that is an approval by Peyton and a second by Langvart. All those in favor, Keith Lee?
Aye.
Langvart?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Peyton?
Aye.
Barber?
Aye.
Passes unanimously, thank you council. Moving on to K, item two, ordinance twenty-six dash zero five, a non-code ordinance of the City Council of the City of Saldovia, Alaska amending the FY twenty-six budget through the appropriation of additional community assistance program funds for a cybersecurity improvement project, and I will pass this over to the city manager.
Uh, thank you Madam Chair. So we did talk about these funds during an appropriation in a previous ordinance, and uh it was discussed that we would keep the Community Assistance Programs funds available for any other projects that would potentially come up, and um that is twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars in funds that were we received that were above the estimated allocation provided by the Division of Community and Regional Affairs. Every year, we receive as, of, some of um funds from the state. And it used to be called the Shared Revenue Fund or something like that, but now it's the, the Community Assistance Program Funds. Um, and every year, we're told and cautioned that we need to not count on these funds, that the state legislator is, has interest in them going away, they have to allocate so many funds into um the, the account every year in order to reinvigorate the um, the account for the communities. So the estimate, uh, this last year was about twenty-five thousand dollars less than we've received in the last several years, so we budgeted for that amount. Uh, and then the payment came through, and surprisingly, pleasantly, we actually did receive a, a comparable amount to the previous year. So that was an additional twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars. Uh, we also have the cybersecurity project coming up that was not accounted for in the budget. Uh, that had to do a lot with the F, the FY twenty-four was, was last year, I think it says on here, the twenty-twenty-four cybersecurity assessment, so. Uh, we completed a cybersecurity assessment, they had a lot of recommendations, it is in the CIP, the Capital Improvement Project, um that we would pursue funding for the policies that uh were recommended, as well as for some of those physical recommendations. Uh, this allocation appropriation would take care of some of those physical needs. Um, one of them being that our server for the city sits in the open in our um breakout room, and it's not enclosed, anybody that walks by could have access to the server, um, and that was a big recommendation that we get it enclosed. Um, so we did have Alaska Technical Solutions, who we contract with to provide technical support to the city, come up, and they visited and did a review of our needs throughout the majority of our buildings, so they went to city office, the harbor, and here to the multipurpose building. The other issue we have with the multipurpose building is that we have multiple points of access between the Saldovia space, the council chambers, fire training, fire department, so the police department. Uh, and we have um a lot of switches in the closet in the Saldovia space, so. And speaking with Alaska Technical Solutions about how to remedy some of these issues, it was recommended that we consolidate, that we put our server and everything into one area in the closet here in Saldovia space, we are able then to use a radio and connect our harbor, our city office, and here, and have a smooth streamlined network that they have access to. In case we have any issues in any of those places, they don't have access to the majority of this building right now, just because of the way it was set up, so this would help them manage our system a little bit better. In case we run into troubles, and it will help Liz and I, because when there's an issue initially, it's Liz and I who get to try to troubleshoot and take care of it. Uh, so it's gonna remedy a lot of issues, providing some extra layers of protection, both physically and then internally within those servers, within those access points, the routers, um, and, and having that level of control that was requested in the recommendations. And we were quoted sixteen thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars to accomplish this, they can come up later this month and take care of it. So recommending to the Saldovia City Council, uh, that this is a really pertinent project that we should take care of, um, sooner than later, knowing that cybersecurity uh is a big a pretty big deal nowadays, and that we do have those funds from the Community Assistance Program, so putting um, that sixteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-two that program and leaving a remaining six thousand and fifty-one dollars that still needs to be appropriated this year, I do have some ideas about that, but um, love to hear your guys' ideas as well. I know that we did have a little bit of an over expenditure on our project in the maintenance shop, uh, with the fire retardant, if you remember um, council members, that we were okay to spend an additional eleven thousand dollars to make sure we had the fire retardant paintings so um above, on our insulation, so that still needs to be appropriated as well. Um, part of that could come from the six thousand, but at this point in time, asking um to be able to complete this cybersecurity project, uh, and be able to move forward uh with just a little bit more security and within the city, so, any questions, please let me know.
Alright, thank you Heidi, uh, with that, I will turn this over to council for any questions or comments.
I, I really think this is worth the money, because not just for easier access for the cyber hacking that goes on right now, and it would cost a lot more if it did get hacked.
I agree with you, council, council member, we uh, and I think just remembering that when we were talking about these funds, um and just keeping in mind that there'd be something that would be coming up, I think this is a, a great, a great way to spend these funds and something that we would have been trying to find a way to budget for anyways, so thank you staff for putting this in front of us, any other comments? Questions?
No, I think it's a good idea, thank goodness.
Alright, and Liz, is there anybody in the public or online that wants to speak on ordinance twenty-six dash zero five?
No, we do not have any public comment for that.
Alright, with that, I will be looking for council to take action on ordinance twenty-six dash zero five.
I can't, through the mayor, I'll go ahead and, um, vote to approve. I already forgot it now. That one, twenty six dash zero five.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All right. We have a approval by Peyton and a second by Taylor for ordinance twenty six dash zero five. All those in favor, Keith Lee, aye? Langvart?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Peyton?
Aye, Madam Chair.
And Barber?
Aye.
All right. We have passed that unanimously. Thank you, council. And finding my spot here, we are done with item K, moving on to item L, unfinished business. We have none. Item M, new business, we have none. Item N, city manager's report, and you will find this in your laydown and I will pass this over to our city manager, Heidi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So it may not look like there's a lot of new items on here, but we've been moving through a lot of big items, particularly the removal of Jackloaf Bay dock or a portion of Jackloaf Bay dock, and we'll get into that. But first with the ongoing grants and pub project list, you'll see in bold and italicized, those are the new things that we've moved through and since the last city council meeting and city manager report. Everything else, uh, that isn't just regular type has already been discussed. Um, but if for the new council members, if you have any questions, please definitely let me know. Uh, so on Jackloaf Bay dock replacement, the environmental assessment, if you remember council, last time we were saying it was at a standstill. Happy to report that we, that the environmental, um, engineer who was working on this was actually recalled back to her desk from the furlough, uh, and so she was able to continue moving through it. They did finish the review of the environmental assessment, provided comments back to us, which is very, uh, normal. They weren't, uh, anything super significant. We did have to complete an air quality assessment. Uh, that's getting finished this week and then those comments, um, or that draft will be updated and sent back to MARAD. And once it's approved, we should be able to sign the grant agreement, uh, and then be reimbursed for some of these pre-authorization expenses. It says two hundred and seventy thousand on here. We did have a recent invoice. It's not included in this number. I apologize, but we're coming to our limit with Moffett and Nickel. Um, we had about a little over three hundred thousand dollars set aside to work with them to do this project that was, oh, pre-authorized, um, to be reimbursed as long as the grant agreement is signed. So we're just waiting and hoping, you know, it was a risk and we were told that and the council was notified that, that it was a risk, um, that needed to be taken in order to receive these funds. And we're almost to the finish line and we did notify them of the dock demolition project that took place uh, here two weeks ago. Uh, they are on board. They're aware. They approved it. Uh, and we continue to communicate them with MARAD as well as the other permitting agencies very regularly. Also, speaking of Jackloaf, we are in the process of obtaining the uplands through a lease with DNR. And we received the final finding and decision that has been determined that they are, um, able to enter into a fifty five year lease with the city of Seldovia for that parcel. Uh, we completed the entry authorization form along with a thousand dollar fee, proof of our current liability insurance for that parcel and have made a request for a survey and land appraisal to be completed. That's part of the process for the lease. Uh, so moving along with that, the, for the new council members, I will say that the city council was very firm. Um, previously that we did not enter into that lease without some kind of agreement, um, or work through on how to clean up the area and that not wanting that responsibility to fall solely on the city's shoulders. So we are in discussion with DOT. We've made that request, um, to see if they will help provide some support to clean up the area, uh, initially when we move into this lease, um, with the hopes on that the city is managing it and moving forward. Um, we're able to limit the issues and concerns moving forward. So that's where we're at with that. And that will come back to you guys before we sign a new lease so that you guys can approve it. And because we'll have to appropriate funds, the tide lands lease is about twelve hundred dollars a year. I don't know what the uplands will be, but I'm maybe similar. We'll find out. And with the raw water transmission line replacement project, I'm really excited to say that they're planning on being here next week. We, that they, I say that's the contractors that the city council approved through resolution. That's East Service, East Road Services, uh, Inc., and they have KUNA engineering on board with them to come, to start this project. It's a design build, so the first part will be the design and engineering of that lower portion of the raw water transmission line. It's the lower thousand fifty feet from the nineteen sixties. It's thin wa- walled steel. It is actively leaking as we speak. We do have some clamps on it. Uh, but it's, it's, we've known for about twenty years now, twenty years plus, that, um, it was gonna give out eventually and it's, it's, it's going. So we're excited to get this project started and see them on the ground over here again and begin the process. But they've signed the contract. We're moving forward. We are in discussion with the University of Alaska, which that have the easement for the utility and we have an easement for access. Public Works has requested that we actually move the utility line to the access line. There's a sixty foot access and that would allow any, it allow easier access for any future maintenance and repairs that are needed of that line. It adds an additional three hundred and twenty feet to the project. Uh, and we know that this, this project has come well under budget. So, and they mentioned in the budget that they could expand the pipe upwards if we needed to. So well, there'll be probably some change orders and some discussion on how to move forward. Um, I did complete a application, I had to complete a permit application with the University of Alaska in order to amend that access easement to include a utility easement in it. I'm waiting on their review, but they seemed amenable so far. So that'll be part of the discussion and I'll let you guys know how that goes. Moving down to number eight, the multipurpose building project, the automatic trans, so the generator's here. The automatic transfer switch has arrived and it's with the contractor that we signed off on, NOTAC, to complete the installation of the generator and the automatic transfer switch. That's for this building. They plan on being here in two weeks' time and Public Works will assist with removing the old generator and placing the new generator and then NOTAC will hook up the building and the automatic transfer switch so that hopefully in future power outages, we have, uh, power. Uh, this funding came through an emergency preparedness grant, actually through our senior meals program, uh, in an effort to provide more food security and, um, better support that program in the future. So.
The outages, they should still be able to operate.
Just fantastic. And councils operating and libraries operating and potentially, um, not everything can. The dishwasher is not gonna go, the, um, washer and dryer and the fire department can't go. But the majority of the building should be able to light up. So we're excited to see that project come to fruition. On the next page here, four under twelve, uh, this is the VSW project, Slu Sewer Improvement Project, and it's actually combined with the previous project, number eleven, the VSW Project Sewer Treatment Facility. Those two were combined into one solicitation for design, the des- the, the design of both projects. Uh, and that solicitation was issued and closed. The commu- uh, the committee is going to review those solicitations tomorrow. I'm a part of that committee. Um, and then hopefully a notice of intent to negotiate will be issued and then, and then the next, uh, year and a half, two years, uh, design and engineering for those construction projects will be completed. And then we'll move forward. You can see under eleven, the, the last line here, which is at the top of the page, that, um, the full, the full funding, I'm jumping around a little bit, the full funding for number twelve was provided. So three, three million nine hundred and thirty two thousand dollars has been appropriated for the Slu Sewer Improvement Project. The Sewer Treatment Facility Project was appropriated one million five hundred and seventy three thousand five hundred that, or five hundred and seventy three, five hundred and five hundred thousand, um, five hundred and seventy three thousand five hundred dollars, sorry. And the whole project is that fifteen million seven hundred and thirty five thousand, uh, dollars. It's supposed to be on a rolling basis that the funds continue to come through. So we're hoping that that is the case. Um, but looking forward to seeing that, uh, come off at least begin. And for the new council members, so that you guys are aware, uh, this was a discussion that the city council had, oh, a while ago. And part of that discussion was they had five, they were presented with five alternative solutions. Um, and they picked the second one at that time, which was an aerated lagoon in order to provide secondary treatment. Um, so a little bit more expensive than what we're currently operating under and we'll have to start having some discussions on what that's gonna look like for rates for the community. But what it does is it solves a big issue with just repairing the commu- the existing community septic tank, which was the number one alternative, um, would remedy a, a long-term problem for the short term, but we would just be in this mess again in twenty years. So. We can have a more in-depth discussion on that offline, if any of you guys want to talk about that in the future. But those are starting to move ahead as well as number thirteen, a notice of intent to negotiate was issued for the water and wastewater system evaluation. We had about six sewer projects and eight water projects that we were particularly interested in. But we wanted an overall review of our system, water and wastewater to help us reprioritize. The last time we had this done was two thousand and three. So having it done again and being able to say, okay, these, or sorry, two thousand and eight, and saying these are the projects that need to be done first as we continue to move through them. I'm sorry, it looks like council member Peyton has her hand up. Do you have a question before I move through this?
Uh, no, I just need you to circle back to that, uh, ever so casual, we got the uplands land lease and feel like it needs more fanfare. I feel like it needs some pats on the backs and some cheers. Good job. So exciting.
Thank you, council member Peyton. We're not there yet. There's still an appraisal and a survey, but we do have the entry authorization, um, so that we can utilize that parcel.
Counting our chickens and we're, we're celebrating. Good job, team.
Thank you.
Can I just have a quick, uh, follow-up questions? They're embarrassing, but like, can you give me a general idea of like, what size parcel are we talking? What does the uplands consist of? I, I didn't see a map and I'm just, I'm kind of, oh, yeah. I don't know exactly what I'm looking at here.
Some question, uh, through the chair. The uplands was a couple acre parcel and it had a fifty five year lease on it. Um, through, through another entity, that lease came about in the last four years, um, for renewal. And part of the discussion and negotiation of the renewal was wanting to be de-obligated or not responsible for the ongoing parking mess and use that's happening on the uplands related to the dock. With that in mind, that existing leaseee, um, moved forward with asking for a, a subdivision of the property in their lease renewal. So they still have a portion of it and I don't want to give exact numbers because I, I'm really bad with exact numbers off the top of my head, but I can provide you a map.
Okay.
Basically, um, half, a little over half, they are retaining through lease. And that's the green space on the upper portion of the uplands and then across the street. But the beach area, um, all, all the way to the parking and then even the parking on the right-hand side, we did negotiate and go back and said, we need another fifty feet on the other side of the right-of-way, uh, because that's where people are parking. And they did grant that to be included, um, in the subdivided portion of the parcel. So they're moving forward with their lease for the portion of the uplands and we're moving through with our application for the beach area. Now, I can provide a map at a, a later date, but I, I, because I don't have it on me, but, um, with that, it would be, uh, it's like one point something acres, a little over an acre for parking and recreation. We, we include parking and recreation and, you know, putting like an attendant hut out there or something. And just better, a little bit better oversight of the area because it hasn't had it.
Yeah, congratulations. That's better.
Uh, so that takes us through our grants and ongoing projects. So to finish up our updates under project activity and project and activity updates below that, uh, list, impressive list we have going on, a little bit more of an update on Jackloaf that we keep alluding to on October twenty first. Actually, I believe it was twenty second, twenty first, we started sending out notices. On October twenty second, the float running parallel to the beach was removed and staged on the uplands due to an infrastructure failure that we believe was aggravated aggravated by recent storms. We were notified that we had, uh, and we had checked it after the storms and it looked okay at that point, though we could see that there was some styrofoam that had, um, piled up on top of the dock a little bit there in the midsection. Uh, and less than a week, we did receive a phone call that that some of that styrofoam was washing up on Hesketh Island and one going back out to reevaluate the dock. Uh, the midsection just after the approach. So when you're turning on to the float that's parallel to the beach was really, um, more drastically starting to stink, to sink, uh, along with the end that's been sinking. So now we had two portions of the dock sinking and the water and flotation, um, material floating out to sea uh, and trying to problem solve and look at what that, you know, can we put new floats in? Can we cover the existing floats? Um, it just, it didn't make any sense other than to get it out of the water to stop it from both sinking and from continuing to cause an environmental issue with styrofoam rapidly deteriorating and going out into the bay. So with that, I did get ahold of, like I said, MARAD, the Army Corps, um, the nymphs and, um, the Coast Guard's been notified of the now marine hazard with the pilings that are still in the water. We also called all of our known users that we have a list for and did some public noticing to report with KBBI, um, trying to make sure that we're, um, transparent about that dock being removed. Uh, it's been beached. We have signs on it right now because we've had people ask if they can take material off of it. Uh, and that is a no, we are not, um, approving people of taking material off of these dilapidating docks. So there are signs on it that says, please keep off. Uh, and then those floats will be disposed of along with the rest of the dock when it's disposed of with our upcoming project. So we're hoping that grant agreement is signed this month. The RFP will go out. The float manufacturing is what I, we've been told is the longest part of that process. Once the RFP goes out and that can take eight months um, or more. So hopefully it doesn't. And then once those new floats are manufactured and normally the float manufacturer will also be manufacturing the pilings. They'll all come up as a package deal and should take actually that long to be able to install them into the water. I'm a little bit concerned because there are so many ongoing projects in the state of Alaska right now that, you know, there could be difficulty in finding a contractor, um, in a short timeframe, but we're fingers crap crossed hoping that that's not an issue. But we're fingers crap crossed, hoping that that's not an issue. Um, so that we, this project can get underway next summer. If not, then we may be pushing it out until spring of twenty twenty-seven. We really, really don't want to do that. So we're trying to get everything done as fast as we can. Get it signed, get the project underway, and I'll continue to give updates as they're available. Any questions on that about Jack Loaf so far?
So, uh, the dock that's been removed is piled up out there. Is that the city's responsibility to dispose of the styrofoam? And who's the burden with that?
So uh, thank you, Councilmember Barbara. Excellent question. Um, and speaking with Marad, we were very clear that it still needs to be considered as part of the project. That the project itself is not changing just because those, that piece of infrastructure was moved. Uh, it still needs to be disposed of. We still don't have that capability ourselves. We have moved it and staged it, but it should still be a part of it. And um, that, that was in concurrence. They, we did get the green light to continue with that process. Uh, so it should still, I don't know that it would be Yeah, it should be a hot, part of the whole project. It would be a challenge for us to do it separately. So it's staged for removal with the rest of the project.
There you go.
Councilmember Peyton?
Uh, sure. I had a slightly more eccentric idea for those uh, those removed sections. I was wondering about um, maybe like raised glamping platforms, you know, with the foam removed. It'd be kind of a fun, like over there by where the water runs off, where people kind of already camp. How fun would it be to have like a historical piece of the original dock that held out for so many years? But I also don't know what the planks look like. I, I, I haven't been able to get out there during the daylight in a while, so, but. Never mind. Don't mind.
Uh, through the chair, excellent suggestion. We can look at that. I know that um, there has been some discussion about at least saving some of the bullrails and doing some kind of a um, a memorial or some kind of a, a tribute to the infrastructure. Uh, moving forward. So well, Harbor Master Leila Janet Pearson is working on that. We'll see um, how that.
We are just asking people to stay off the pile and plans moving forward.
Would be super cool though to do some of that artsy-fartsy out there.
I do want to say, six years ago, the dock was replaced. The city did that, even though it wasn't the city dock. And those pilings, I believe, are in that building that were taken from there. The city didn't auction them off or anything like that. I believe those are still in that building.
Um, through
That was the original.
I'll have to look at that. I don't remember pilings being replaced. I know the boards were.
Yeah, the, the boards were put, replaced.
Yeah.
And the planks were taken to that building. I don't know what you call it.
The value-added building?
Yes, that's it. Thank you.
So um, that is through the chair, that is part of the reason why um, there's been a lot of requests to be able to harvest some of the material from the infrastructure. There are some good boards out there.
Negative ghostwriter, first let's do something fun through the chair.
But we don't necessarily want people climbing on it because that's uh, that's a safety hazard. So we can look into it. We'll look into what we can do with that. A couple more smaller updates. The SPD truck uh, was sent to Anchorage, as you may be aware, to have some recall work done. They gave us a diagnosis with over six thousand dollars um, worth of repairs to be done. I was spoke with Public Works. Excellent ways to navigate through that. Want to give Riley Baldaga a huge shout out for that. Um, he was able to call. I communicated with the um, with Kendall Ford and he communicated with them. And uh, came up with some great next steps. So the truck is gonna come back to us and Public Works is gonna complete those repairs. Uh, that's something that they normally do is maintain and take care of the vehicles. This one was a little bit more tricky because of the work that it needed to be done. Uh, but it sounds like he's got a really good plan. And even Kendall Ford was really interested in hearing how it works out. So we're gonna uh, attempt to do everything in-house first and I have uh, full confidence. The SOC Coordinator position was hired, so we want to give a big welcome to Marina Chisus. She's been on for about two weeks now and she's doing excellent job already putting out calendars and flyers and attending events. And I think she's gonna be a really good fit. So looking forward to that. Uh, we did talk about the water treatment plant at the last council meeting. But I just wanted to put out the reminder that Public Works were also supporting the generator project here in two weeks. Um, will be assisting Todd and Ryan with DEC while they're here. And with um, East Road Services and Kuna Engineering when we start this raw water kickoff. Or when we attend this raw water kickoff here this month. So they um, they're humble in their reports, but they are always busy. And the yard across from the city yard going out the road looks so much better now that they've been burning and taking care of some of that material that's been sitting there for two decades. So very happy to see that and really appreciative of the team. Everything else you guys have seen before? Um, under upcoming council business on page five, just a reminder that there is a capital improvement plan. Work session scheduled for before the November tenth meeting next Monday. So that'll be uh, probably a four thirty PM work session. November tenth, please let us know if you have a conflict in schedule and that does not work for you. Uh, we should get this project wrapped up. That way we can uh, be prepared with the council's legislative priorities. For FY twenty-seven for the state and, and federal government. And also the joint work session with the Sodovia Planning Commission is scheduled for this Wednesday, November fifth. Uh, to discuss the comprehensive plan update. You guys should all have that packet already. If you don't, please let us know. Uh, I did a really thorough review of it myself on Friday. And I sent them back a list of edits, but they were very small and minor, just some typos. Um, they do allude to our lump plan in a couple places in the back. And that's the way that they allude to it is not how we've been using that. So I'm switching out that terminology and just a few really minor things. But please review it and uh, let them know your questions. AML's been working with us on this project. They're not gonna be here for that meeting, unfortunately. Um, but Liz and my, and myself can help run you guys through the plan itself. And then um, we'll issue out the following week a public, a final draft for the public and do a public comment period for thirty days, as well as hold a public meeting with AML. They'll come back down uh, and be our facilitators for it um, in the beginning of December. So making sure that we try to encourage the public uh, to get out and provide input on that. Uh, as it's very important plan that helps guide a lot of the decision, the decisions that are made in the city. So with that, I am done unless you guys have any further questions. Oh, one more thing, sorry. Newsletter. Finally did the newsletter a year later. Um, I'm gonna try to get back to doing quarterly newsletters. But um, definitely heard recently uh, from a few council members, a great reminder of the importance of um, communication with the public and continuing transparency. So trying to get back into the quarterly um, system of putting out a newsletter to let everybody know what's going on. And we'll try to do this again in December. If you guys, like I said, have any questions or anything you want to see in it, please let me know. Thank you.
Fabulous. Thank you so much for all of that. Um, great city manager's report as usual, and I loved seeing the newsletter come through in my email today. I know I shared it with my other half and a few other folks. So um, any other questions from council for City Manager Heidi? All right. With that, we will move on to our next item. Item O, informational items not requiring action. We have one this evening. Sorry. All right. So we actually have two informational items not requiring action. Our first item is that joint work session with the Sodovia Planning Commission on the draft comprehensive plan update that will be held this Wednesday, November fifth at six PM in place of the regular planning commission meeting. Our second item is city offices will be closed on November eleventh, twenty twenty-five and observance of Veterans Day. Um, and it says, see page twenty-four. I don't know what's on page twenty-four. Oh, that's our Jack Loaf Bay dock notice. Oh, no, there we go. It's just letting us know that you guys are gonna be closed in a really pretty canva. Awesome. All right, and moving on to item P, executive session. We have none this evening. Item Q, council mem- council and mayor comments concerning items not on the agenda. I'm the first one, Keith Lee. Uh, thank you all for bearing through this, this evening with me as I jumble around, but tried to keep us on task. So I would stay focused, being a couple hours ahead. Um, and welcome to our new council members and for Jack coming back on for another term. Really appreciate having a full council again. It helps everything run very smoothly. Um, and then Langvart.
Uh, thank you, everybody, and I want to welcome the new members. And uh, thank you, Manager Heidi and Clerk Diamond. Thank you so much.
And Coleman?
No comment.
Thank you. And Taylor?
Thank you, everybody, for the warm welcome. I really appreciate Heidi's effort with the newsletter. That's all.
All right, Peyton?
Well, I just have to say, ow. What a great meeting, you guys. We have new people. We have people returning. We have so much fun news coming out of the staff reports. I love it. Such an exciting meeting. Welcome, Marina. Still soaked on this Jack Loaf thing. There's a couple other things I was excited about that I've already just like, what a great meeting. I love it. What a perfect way to start the week. Happy Monday.
All right. And Barbara?
Thanks for filling in for our mayor.
No problem. And I will add to that, let's all send some good vibes his way. I uh, I had another friend of mine who had the same thing happen to him this last year and it was not a fun experience. So um, I'm glad he decided he would take the evening off. I was happy to step in. All right. So with that, that takes us down to item R, our next meeting. Which will be next week, Monday, November tenth, twenty twenty-five at six PM. And item S, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I will second that.
With that, thank you, everybody, and have a fabulous evening.
Thank you, everybody. I did forget to mention, just if you're still on, that there will be a power outage Wednesday between twelve-thirty and two-thirty is supposed to be the time or twelve and two. But that could get extended to four off and on as they work on our generators. So just so everybody knows, that's planned. And on Booster Club Hut, tomorrow, two PM. And the gym is gonna be the first basketball game, middle school basketball. So if you guys are interested in sports, come out and show support for our kids. There'll be some concessions, a small door uh, admission fees that will help, those funds will help go back in the pot for the sport. Um, and really excited to hopefully see the community out there. So thank you.
Wow.
Great. Thank you, Heidi.